I'd like to open the October 7th, 2014 Board of Aldermen meeting. Could we all stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I guess the first thing on is, I can't say the word guys. recognition for Hannah King.
Proclamation.
Proclamation. They don't bite much.
Don't be scared.
Jaw on there. Okay, we have a proclamation. Whereas Hannah, did I say it wrong again?
No, I just didn't want like half my face to go.
Whereas Hannah King is a nineteen-year-old daughter of Kenneth and Barb King of Warrenton, Missouri. Whereas Hannah King has been crowned 2014 Missouri State Fair Queen and was named 2013 Warren County Fair Queen. Whereas Hannah King is 2013 graduate of Warrenton High where she played basketball, won state honors in track, also competed in barrel racing, and whereas Hannah King is currently a sophomore attending the University of Missouri in Columbia and plans on majoring in health science and physical therapy. Now therefore be it resolved that the Mayor, Jerry Dyer, and the Board of Aldermen on behalf of the residents of Warrenton, Missouri, you hereby congratulate Hannah King for being crowned Missouri State Fair Queen and wishes her continued success in her future endeavors dated October 7th, 2014. There you are.
Oh, I don't know if she has a hat.
Is she aware that we're going to put her name and her sign up on the road? Has that been taken care of or?
Yes.
Okay, I didn't know she was aware of that.
She was excited.
Okay, good.
So if someone steals it, we suspect it's you.
Probably.
No.
We're going to check your room. We have approval for hire. Anybody, we have to vote on that, is that correct?
Yes.
We need to make a motion, am I entertaining a motion?
I make a motion that we hire Sean Schrader as a maintenance laborer in the Public Works Department at $12 an hour.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Would you read the motion back to us?
Motion by Alderman Holly, seconded by Alderman Dyer, to approve to hire Sean Schrader as a maintenance laborer in the Public Works Department at $12 an hour.
Roll call vote.
Alderman Dyer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alder Person Castily?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes. Motion's carried, six to zero. Could go to the next part, I guess. I'm lost at all once. I'll get into the rhythm of this someday. Approval of minutes, regular board meeting?
Yeah.
Introduction.
Introduce that number five.
Okay, guess we, introduction of new police officers?
Well, actually, and I'll actually take care of Sean as well, if I may.
That's great, thank you.
I actually had the pleasure of meeting Sean while he was getting his CDL the other day, which was kind of interesting. But Sean, if you'd stand up and introduce yourself to the board, this is Sean Schrader, he's the new maintenance laborer in the Public Works Department.
Would've been an evil trick if we didn't approve that, huh?
Indeed. Welcome aboard.
I'd like to thank everybody for giving the opportunity to serve the community.
Thank you.
And in the Police Department, Ryan, this is Ryan Rowland, he is our new police officer, comes to us with a lot of experience.
Welcome.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
I'll tell you about Gary Drives later.
Okay, let's move on, we can talk about that later. We move on to approval of minutes, regular board meeting minutes from September 16. I think a motion will approve the board meeting from September 16.
Second.
Motion's been made first and second to approve the minutes. Do we have a roll call vote?
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alder Person Castily?
No, I was absent.
Alderman?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
No.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dyer?
Yes.
That would be an abstain for me in case you got the no.
Motion has passed five to one, or five to zero with one abstention. Anyone get it out? It just takes a while. Work session minutes from September 29th, interview with the master plan. I'll make a motion to approve the work session minutes for September 29th, 2014.
Second.
Motion's been first and second to approve the minutes of the work session, roll call vote.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alder Person Castily?
Abstain, I was absent again.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dyer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes. Motion has passed five to zero with one abstention. Hearing from the public, at this time we allow anybody from the public to give us comments after five minutes, if anybody would like to come forward. Seeing none, the same opportunity is given to the Board of Aldermen. Would we like to start with Mr. Dyer?
I'm getting nothing.
Yeah, I'd like to actually, to the horn for one of our own, Alderman Clark's really kind of stepped up and took the bull by the horns while we've had our mayor absent, and I know as much as we'd all like to see the mayor back and in good health, I'm really happy to see him stepping up and doing a good job, so that's optimal.
Thank you.
I do not have any more.
My turn.
Your turn.
Yeah, I would like to acknowledge the fact that the community did a great job on, I think it was September the 27th, we had the FARA 5K walk. It was very impressive how the city came out and supported that walk, the fire department, the police department, so I'd like to thank the community for that, it was a very successful fundraiser. And something else I would like to remind the community, anybody who watches this tomorrow, we're getting around the time of the year where people start burning their leaves, and although we can't control that, I would ask that people are conscious about how much they're burning, there's a lot of people in our community that either have lung problems, allergy problems, children have trouble breathing, and this time of year it gets really miserable for some of those individuals, so please think about that, maybe mulch the first time around and bag the second and then burn what's left, but just think of the other people in your community if you would, please.
And I have nothing. The mayor's report, Terry, you have something, the mayor's report?
Yes, I have an email that the mayor sent today and asked me to read at this section of the meeting for him. It says, "Dear Warrenton residents, Board of Aldermen and city staff, currently I'm experiencing some health issues that have me hospitalized and have limited my ability to visit City Hall. As expected during my absence, the capable and competent city staff and Board of Aldermen have met each and every need of the city. Nothing has gone unattended. I want to thank them for the lovely flowers and cards, they really brightened my day. A special thank you to Alderman John Clark for filling in for me this evening. Yes, John, I know I owe you one. Thanks to Alderman Eric Schluter for agreeing to open the upcoming performances of the Kelly Miller Circus, and thanks to Terry Thorne for filling my airtime on KWRE LiveWire this week. The city is blessed to have employees that are dedicated and efficient in their duties and step up to the plate when needed. I am disappointed that I cannot be in attendance tonight with all the wonderful and exciting things happening in the city of Warrenton right now. I had hoped to be there to congratulate our budding artist on the fine job they did with the coloring contest for the circus. I hope each of you have a fun and memorable time seeing a performance. I was looking forward to honoring our own Missouri State Fair Queen Hannah King. We are also proud of you for representing our city and county. After two state fair queens in a row, it's obvious Warrenton delivers the best and brightest young ladies to enter the competition. Congratulations again Hannah. I'm especially disappointed to be absent tonight as the check is presented to the committee for the tribute to Veterans Memorial. This will be an important addition to our city and county and I am proud to support their efforts. I look forward to welcoming many visitors to our community to visit this significant site. I encourage all citizens to rally around this effort to honor the soldiers who gave their lives for our country. On a final note, my wife Cheryl and I are so very grateful for the prayers and messages of concern from citizens, friends, and of course our families. I hope to thank each of you personally very soon. I look forward to fully resuming my duties of mayor very soon as well. Sincerely, Jerry Dyer."
Move on to item number 10, approval of road closure, Vashaw to Cool to Pinkney for the homecoming parade October 10th. Bobby, you have, could you come up here?
Yes.
Give your main position.
My name is Bobby Spoonster, I'm the Activities Director at Warrenton High School. We were asking to shut down the roads for a period of time on Friday, the 10th, barring, I just got a weather report that said 90% rain on that day, so I don't really know how much we're going to have to worry about that, but if the weather cooperates with us, to be able to do that for the homecoming parade. I know Chief Hottichelle and our Transportation Director have been contacting each other with what's going to go on, so I think all's good there.
What time's the actual parade start?
It's going to start at 11:45.
Everything's been okay through you?
Yes, yeah, everything's good. It's the same as it was last year, that actually worked out pretty good.
I make a motion that we, I'm sorry.
Can I ask a question? Who will make the no-go call for the rain?
We will make the no-go call at 10 o'clock. So give everybody an hour of, by that time we'll know with the forecast, you know, whether it's going to be until 10 o'clock, we'll know, so we can give everybody plenty of time to know yes or no, whether they're going to do it.
Very good, thank you.
So will they do it on Saturday then, or just no parade?
We were talking about that today, and that will depend, we would like to be able to do that, but that would be get approval and then try to get everybody back that day, being that some of our sports may be playing districts and that kind of stuff going on, so we don't really know, it's kind of up in the air when we left today.
Okay, I make a motion, I'm sorry.
If they rearrange it, how does that affect the permit?
They have to come back and ask again.
Really, between now and Friday.
I guess that is a good question.
I think you can extend it to that date if you want to.
You guys could approve it and delegate an alternative date to Terry or to Greg Hottichelle to approve.
We could just straight.
Delegate, you say, if they need to move it, give the chief of police authority to approve the change in the date.
Okay, now can I go?
Any other questions?
Sorry, just wanted to cover all bases.
That's a good question, though.
I'll make a motion that we approve the closing of portions of Vashaw Avenue, Cool Street, and Pinkney Street from 11 to 2 p.m. for the homecoming parade on October the 10th with the inclusion of approval for a Saturday parade if needed and approved by the chief.
I'll second that. Motion's been made to approve the closure, roll call vote.
Alder Person Castily?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dyer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Motion has passed six to zero to approve it. On down to item number 11, Paint the Town Red.
Yes, I know that one of our principals, Bobby Russell, approached me with the idea of something she'd seen here in the past with you guys allowing people to like tie bows on stuff around town and, you know, in honor of Homecoming Week and those things, she had, she's cut up a bunch of ribbons and stuff and she wanted to, I know she sent all the information over here just to make sure that it'd be all right if we did that there during this Homecoming Week.
Okay, I don't have any problem with it if Brad is okay, he's so fussy about his poles.
Just as long as they don't use any tape, tape on the poles because with the powder coating it will.
I believe, she told me that she found out from, was it the American Cancer Society that did it the last time, or one of those associations?
Relay for Life.
Relay for Life.
That she asked them exactly what they used and she went and got the exact same stuff for that.
Yeah, that's, yeah, just as long as they get it on there tight, maybe put a zip tie around them to kind of hold them. The ones down here aren't too bad because they're a fluted pole, the ones on 47, I don't know if you're going to use those too, those are more of a straight, they have a little, you know, just have to be a little, use a zip tie or something on them and hold them on there.
Okay.
I don't think you have any problem with it.
Is there any other discussion, question?
Do we need a formal motion?
We need a motion?
I think you guys should do a motion and vote, and I don't know if you guys want to give a date, they have to all come down by or just leave it after Christmas.
It'd leave after Christmas.
You can cut down the hometown Christmas expenses.
Do what?
Brad, when would you like to have them down?
When is, I mean, is it just for the week and then?
That's kind of what she was thinking, I think basically her school wanted to take this project on as something.
If we can have them down Monday or so, that'd be good.
How about Tuesday or Wednesday? Because I mean, the way school's going to be, I mean, they're going to be back in school on Monday and they'll be working all day, so they probably won't have a chance to get them all the way done on that day.
That's fine.
Okay.
All right, I make a motion that we approve the request to paint the town red to celebrate Warrenton High School homecoming and that all signs and banners be down by next Wednesday.
I'll second. Motion's been made first, made in second, I'll get this out, to allow the ribbons to be put on the poles, roll call vote.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dyer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alder Person Castily?
Yes.
Motion's passed six to zero.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Well, thank you. Okay, the item 12, acceptance of proposal for refunding certificates of participation, Joy Howard. You can probably explain what we're doing since I didn't do a very good job of it.
So, am I on? I'm not good with microphones. Several weeks ago, the city engaged my services to review the feasibility of refunding your two outstanding certificates of participation obligations, which is basically lease obligations, and since that meeting, working with Terry, we prepared a request for proposal, we sent it to, I'm thinking about 10 firms, about 10 firms. Proposals were due last week and we received only two proposals, which isn't really a surprise because as a courtesy, we sent the request for proposals to several firms we thought weren't going to respond but wanted to give them that opportunity. The two proposals that we received were from Stern Brothers, who I'm sure most of you have heard of, and the other is from Branch Banking and Trust Company, who I'm sure most of you haven't heard of because they're out of Charlotte, North Carolina. I, as a financial advisor, actually I work in more than one state and I have access to firms all over the country, and that's how I became aware of their firm and included them in the request for proposal. I recently worked with them on lease financing in Wright City, Missouri, so that's why I included them, and I'm glad I did because it just so happens that they submitted the best proposal. And if I sound like I'm shaking, it's not because I'm nervous, it's because I'm very cold.
It is cold in here.
It's very cold.
Thank you, thank you.
Anyway, so moving right along, they submitted the best proposal and their rate was almost about, I'm thinking about almost a half a percent lower than I had estimated. Now that doesn't equate into, you know, huge amounts of money because both these leases were very small, but based on where we are right now, they gave us firm final rates, as long as we complete the transaction within the next, I figure it was 45 days that we had to finish it, is that right? We don't have quite all of the costs of issuance finalized yet, but based on their proposal and my best guesstimate of costs right now, we're anticipating that for one series that would refinance your outstanding 2005 obligations, you would achieve savings of approximately $42,700, that's after expenses. And on the refunding of the 2009 series, your savings would be about $33,000. And in both of those cases, each transaction is about $10,000 more savings than I had estimated at the time that you directed me to proceed. So since you hired me to do this and I'm looking at savings that are more than we anticipated, I would anticipate that the city would want to vote tonight to proceed and to proceed with Branch Banking and Trust Company. We have bond counsel on board to draft documents, that's Gilmore and Bell, who the city's consistently worked with in the past, and Chris will be looking over the documents as well, but we're in the process of drafting them. If for some reason the documents came out and Branch Banking and Trust Company didn't like the documents and we couldn't come to a meeting of minds, the city's out of pocket expenses for having proceeded, other than possibly Chris's time, which I can't speak for, but all the other parties to the transaction, myself, Branch Banking, their fees, and bond counsel, all of our fees are contingent, I'm sorry, mine aren't, bond counsel and Branch Banking are contingent on closing. Mine aren't because of the way the rules on private placements are organized, I could not make my contingentia. So you'd be out no more than what you had agreed to engage me for several weeks ago, but everything else by voting to proceed, you incur no more expenses than where you were four weeks ago.
Do you have any questions?
Oh, well may, I do have to say one other thing, and I'd better interrupt you or I'll forget to. The plan is to have final documents and approval at the November meeting, which is on, it's the first November meeting.
It's the 4th.
November 2nd, is that where I can?
That's, yeah, that sounds right.
Are there spreadsheets of cash contribution or reserves as part of it, or?
That's the reserve that was set up for, specifically for the lease transaction, it can only be used towards the payment of the lease, so it's not coming from any other source of monies that are like regular general funds, the city has to use that reserve to pay off the old debt.
So that reserve was created when the original was, as part of what was financed was the reserve piece?
Yes, that's correct.
And so since we're refinancing it, we have to pay that back?
Yes.
So these new things do not require a reserve?
That's correct.
So, run by the savings again because I'm a little confused, so the first one is the savings of how much?
$42,700.
Okay.
And the second one is $33,000.
Okay, I see that.
I'm rounding this.
Yeah, I understand, I get that. So this doesn't create a cash flow situation because the reserve money was sitting there anyway, so it's part of the savings because you're paying down part of the debt, so the savings is from getting it financed at a cheaper rate, it's part of it, but you're also financing $200,000 less, so it's a combination of those two that create the savings.
Savings is most, well, you're right, but most of it is because the lower interest rate. Now I don't think I brought that with me.
What was the effect?
Do you remember what the original rates were? You have, should I pull that?
I don't remember what the original rates were.
So do you have how far down the rates went from?
Yeah, I was going to give you those rates. On the refunding that's related to the series 2005, the rate is 1.84, and on the second issue it's at 1.46, and if you want to give me a minute, I can pull what the old rate is, but I'm thinking without remembering exact, I think it's like 4%.
That's what I was going to say.
Something on the bottom here was 4.507. 507, so that was the old rate, so it's dropped more than 50%.
Correct. Now if you had a lot of debt outstanding, we'd be looking at, you know, millions of dollars of savings here, it's just that you don't realize a whole lot because the issue is very small.
So does the amortization or the payout period now extend?
We're keeping it the same.
It's the same, so it's going to pay out at the same time in either case?
Yes.
So does that make the monthly payments go up substantially or?
Going down, but not substantially.
It's going to go down, okay.
It's not a huge change, but a few thousand dollars.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions? So we need to, a motion to do the refinancing through?
Branch.
Branch Banking and Trust Company out of North Carolina?
Correct, and the motion is strictly a direction to proceed because you'll still have a chance of approving all the final documents.
They'll have to do it to Oregon, send you.
Correct, yes.
Okay, so that's my motion, that we proceed with the refinancing through Bank, Branch Bank Trust in, I can't read, out of North Carolina. I'll second. Motion's been made first and second, would you read that motion back to us?
To proceed with proposal of refunding of the 2005 and 2009 certificates of participation with Branch Banking and Trust Company.
Roll call vote.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dyer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alder Person Castily?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes. Motion is passed six to zero.
Thank you very much for having me, and I'll see you in a few weeks.
Okay, sounds good. November 4th. Item 13, Certified Work Ready Community. We have some folks to talk to us about that.
Good evening, everyone, can you hear me okay? My name is Joy Ann Turper, and I work for Boonslick Regional Planning Commission with one of the many programs that we serve there. I am responsible for all the Missouri Career Center programs, services to the business community, as well as the job seekers, and I would like to thank you all for allowing me this time to talk to you all about a new product that is widespread across the nation that is doing some great work. ACT is commonly known for the college entrance exam for all of our students that we put through school, however, there are very few aware of a workforce assessment that is out there currently that ACT has created. It can be tough, at best, finding qualified candidates for our local employers to put to work. ACT has created this tool that has taken the guesswork out of finding employers for the right skill sets. It offers a suite of assessments and certifications that can measure the workers' foundational workplace skills such as math, reading, and locating information required for the majority of jobs in today's workforce. The workforce test is called Work Keys. This can be accessed from any career center across the state of Missouri, as well as any community college, as it's east central in our southern portion of our county, and St. Charles Community College also is a partner that works with us for this product. Any registered career center customer coming in on a daily basis can register with the career center for services, and one of the services that are offered free of charge to all of our job seekers and anyone utilizing the career center free of charge is this tool. They register with the career center, once they are registered, there's a remediation tool on our website that can be accessed for free, they remediate refreshing skill sets that maybe they haven't used in a while. Once that is done, they call us, they set up an appointment to come in and take this test, which is proctored by trained professionals to proctor the ACT test called Work Keys. From there, they are, and just so you know, I say free, but Division of Workforce Development is paying for these across the state. They buy a huge pocket of tests throughout the year to get us through our program year, July 1 through June 30. Community colleges are proctoring the test as well, so if we have a job seeker coming into the career center and in order for them to go to work for a specific employer, some of the larger ones are proctored, and they can require that you have to have this credential in order to go to work for them, Boeing, GKN, some of the larger St. Louis companies, there's also some other profiled businesses down in Franklin County as well, we can get them into a community college or set up a special accommodations here at the career center. We all have a stake in making our county more competitive and closing the skills gap that threatens our economy. Change starts at the grassroots level. Day in and day out, I watch job seekers walk into my career Day in and day out, I watch job seekers walk into my Career Center that may not be totally qualified to apply for some of these jobs. It is my hope and my dream to give them the skill sets and the abilities to take that step up to where they need to be to be able to apply for these jobs and give them the skill sets that they need. I also believe that by providing a community-based framework, it will link workforce development to education by not only training those that may be underemployed and unemployed, but also for incumbent workers. They can also access this Work Keys test in order to upgrade their skill sets with a potential employer. It also aligns our economic development needs in our communities regionally, locally, statewide, and nationwide. It matches individuals to jobs based on skill levels. Currently nationwide, statewide initiative is called the Certified Work Ready Communities. This is something that ACT believed in after, I guess, assessing businesses from coast to coast, what was most important to them, what was most relevant. So they chose the top three areas that would be most relevant to businesses across the nation. And they were applied mathematics, locating for information, and reading for information. The first step is almost finalized here in Warren County. Jan and I and some of the other community leaders have been meeting with local businesses, economic developers, K through twelve. Both the school districts in Warren County are on board with assisting with this process, local elected officials, workforce, community colleges. And fortunately, we have both backing us up, chambers of commerce. What I'd like to do is basically share with you a screen print of the goals for Missouri and the county. This will go pretty quickly, just so that you understand the three measurements of goals. The center has been working on this now pretty strongly now for about two or three years. And what we have found is that we're about thirty percent of the way there already of taking our goals. The other side has the map. There we go. As you can see, nationwide, anything in the dark and red areas, those are states and counties that are already choosing to participate with the Certified Work Ready Communities. When this initiative began, it began with seven states across the nation. We're now up to over twenty plus. It's growing tremendously in a short amount of time. If you click on the state of Missouri, it's going to show you how many people have tested across the state of Missouri. And then you can drill down. When it shows the state of Missouri, the red areas again are counties that have chosen, they've already applied with the state of Missouri Workforce Investment Board that they want to participate in this initiative. The gold color counties are counties that have already obtained their certification. They've reached their goals. So what their economic developers can then do is have a tool in their toolkit to say that I do have a county that is workforce ready. Now, if you click on Warren County, the emerging workforce, the goal that the state of Missouri set is a hundred and four. We actually have already tested forty-five individuals. The current workforce, for some unknown reason, they weren't expecting a lot of people to go for that. We had a goal of ten. We're already at fifty-four. And the transitioning workforce are the unemployed, those working on their high school equivalency test, a hundred and eighty-two. We have fifty-five tests already. If you scroll down to the bottom of the page, you can see the levels of attainment. Bronze is a level three. It is the lowest level that can be obtained. And if you would score a level three, you would demonstrate the ability for over sixteen percent of the jobs in the workforce. If you score a level silver, which is a level four, it shows eighty. That's the majority of the population we test. That's where they're scoring. And that's preparing them for at least sixty-seven percent of the jobs that are advertised. And then the gold, which is a very high accommodation, that's ninety-three percent of the jobs. They're saying that they have the skill sets and the abilities to obtain. Platinum is very rare. I get to see one. Other than, we did have a staff member before we went to the National Career Writing and Certificate. We had the Missouri Career Ready, and she did score platinum. If you scroll down even further, another goal is local businesses. This is a free tool that Division of Workforce Development is collaborating with the chambers at the state level, economic developers, education partners. They're trying to, we need, we recognize that we need our businesses to derive this. It's critical that our businesses prefer to hire someone that has gone through the extra measures of completing this test. If that is done, and the business agrees to partner with us, their company is just agreeing to that they will include that as part of their hiring practice. It doesn't mean they have to hire someone that has that credential. It's just that they will look at someone with a credential a little bit more in depth than they would somebody who does not. Now, what the businesses are finding that are using that as far as our hiring practice, the return on investment is huge. Their training costs have been dramatically reduced. The hiring process have been diminished, much smaller than what they were doing. So basically, what I'm here to ask all of you is to support Warren County by moving forward to become a certified work-ready community to improve our local workforce. Then economic developers who are out there working with the existing businesses, as well as the new businesses, will have another tool to utilize to say that Warren County is certified work-ready. And until we obtain the remainder of those goals that I shared, we are at least working towards that goal, knowing that that is one of the most critical aspects of bringing new businesses to our community. All that's required tonight by participating in this endeavor is a signature on our leadership team form. And I've included that in all of the packets that I forwarded to Melody, which you should all have a copy of. The initiative is being paid for at the state level. It is free to all of the counties. What we will be doing by October thirty-first is submitting our application to the Division of Workforce Development. They will approve it at the state level. And I'm told right now, the plan is by January, if it's approved, then we will show up on the ACT grid map that we are participating county, working towards achieving our goals. We have two years to obtain those goals. And then that will give Michelle and many of the other economic developers and chambers of commerce and businesses a better skilled workforce in our community.
So why are you here? You're not the county, you're the city.
Why am I here? I am here to get buy-in from the Board of Aldermen. I have spoken with Mayor Dyer about this. He wanted me to share this information with the Board of Aldermen at the meeting. And also to raise awareness. How many of you have heard about this before in this room? That's what we're finding. As I go out and speak with people, no one's heard of this product before. And it's free, and it's been in our community for the past five years, and no one knows about it. So what better way to get the word out is by to come and share this with people and network more information.
Well, I understand that. But are you coming to us as an employer, asking us to participate? Are you coming to us as a city, asking us to endorse the product? Or, I mean, you know, see, so I'm saying is, I looked at the application, and it's talking about us as an employer. And so how are we any different than Certainty or whoever else is on the list? I don't get that.
Okay. Yes to all of your questions. Yes, if you want to make that a part of your hiring practice, you can choose to do that by signing the letter of partnership. If you choose not to make that, that is fine. But we're also asking you to endorse us as participating in the leadership team. I would love nothing more than to have Michelle sitting at our table as one of our economic developers with this leadership team, moving forward, brainstorming ideas, how can we reach out to the people within our community that need this tool to improve their work skills.
So if we decide as an employer, we don't want to do this because we don't see a value to the city of Warrenton, and we don't sign as employer, then she gets excluded off the team, right? Is that what you're saying?
She won't be included in the leadership team. I do have other economic developers in our county that have chosen to participate with that. I don't believe in just having one. I want to have everybody. I want to make this known to all of Warren County to improve our workforce.
Well, I think that's fine. But I guess my problem is, as a council member, you feel like we're forcing us to change your business practice simply so she can participate in the leadership team and be involved. Because if we say we don't see value, we don't add it, but we'd like for her to work on economic development, be part of the team, you're saying we can't do that. So you're forcing a business policy in order to get participation. That's how I see it, unless...
Joanne, can we participate as endorsing the product without us using this as a practice for hiring with the city? And she could still participate?
That is correct.
Okay.
But that means we can follow this and not check the box that we recommend? Because when I read this, my biggest issue was checking the box. Number one, we will recommend the National Career Writing and Certificate in hiring and promoting practices for one or more of the positions in our organization. And I don't want to do that. I don't have any problem promoting it as a work tool and as a community development tool, but I don't want to change your business practice because of that.
Okay. You do have the right not to participate in this. This is basically saying you're going to add this, that you believe in the product, you believe that it will improve your hiring practices. The turnover rate will be reduced. You can make the decision that you do not want to participate with the hiring practice on that. But you can also decide that, yes, I do want somebody on the leadership team. I do want to know how they're going to go about obtaining these goals and have a pulse on what's happening. Yes. And that would just require signature and information on this form for whoever that person may be, whether it's Mayor Dyer, whether it's Michelle.
And that's the endorsement piece of it?
Yes.
Yeah.
So we can do this separately?
Yes, that is correct.
Gary, would you have a problem with doing it that way?
No, I, I mean, I think whatever, I mean, I don't believe in the ACT. I don't believe public entities should be allowing tests like this to occur to exclude them from public institutions. I think the ACT approach to public colleges is wrong, is a philosophical standpoint. I don't understand why a kid who just graduated from Vattarat and has got a qualified degree in welding or whatever his skill set now needs to go and pay or run to a different source to be retested when the school says he can accomplish. I don't see how that adds value.
He doesn't have to do this. This is nothing anybody has to do, but if someone is wanting to get their foot in the door...
But he has to do it. If we say we're going to give preference to people with certificates, then he feels pressured to do it.
That is true, but that doesn't mean you have to include that in your hiring practice. Now, there are some companies that choose to make that a part of their practice, and they can become what's called profiled, and that's a whole different discussion for another day.
Well, I think private sector companies can do whatever they want to. I don't have any issue with anybody doing that. I just, from a public perspective, I just can't see us doing that, requiring children who are young adults or adults who are qualified through some other source now having to go and take another test just so they can take advantage of an opportunity with the city of Warrenton.
What it has done is opened doors for individuals who are having a difficult time finding employment. Businesses realize that if somebody's taken the extra time to go out and remediate and take this test, it's getting people's foot in the door with employers is what it's doing. I don't think it's causing an extra burden on anyone other than opening doors for...
Ask the kid who's just graduated from high school with a four-point-oh grade point, if there's pressure from sitting down and taking the ACT, I think there is. So I, I mean, so I don't, I mean, I don't see any value to the city if police chief says, I have this guy who graduated from the academy, Police Academy, and I want to hire him for being an officer. I don't see how this certificate makes me any more comfortable in hiring him or not hiring him. So that's why I don't see it as a practice tool. But if we want to endorse it, I have no problem. But that's where I would vote, knowing on that part of it. I would vote to promote it. If businesses feel like it's an important tool, then I think we should support the business as well to do it. But that's why I'm here.
Is there any other questions from the board?
I do believe Michelle should be our representative.
Oh, yeah. I agree, that's why.
Mike, are you here for this?
I'm here for something else.
He's here for money.
What do you, you have anything input on this?
Joanne's the expert on it.
Right.
Joanne's the expert, so she can, is a lot better at answering the questions. But in my time with Boonslick, you know, I've been exposed to it, attended meetings, learned as much as I can about it. And I see it from a business standpoint. We've, at Boonslick, kind of said that we'll participate. And we don't see it, and I don't see it, as something that limits us on who we can hire and who we can't. I think it's another tool that if we, if there's a particular job type that we need to find out what somebody's skills are, it's another tool for that. So, but we're not going to limit that somebody doesn't get a job at Boonslick because of this test or not, because that's not what this is about, is a limiting thing. But I do have seen that, hearing from employers, that employers sometimes aren't always confident or have a challenge with finding skilled workers with the type of skills that they need. And that if they, some of the employers have expressed that if there's a tool for them to find out and know that the people they're employing have the skills that they need, that saves them and helps them have better employees, less turnover, those kinds of things. We had a discussion with some, on this issue, and there were some employers from, they were from Franklin County, but they're participatory in this. And I was really kind of surprised to hear from them that they're, when they went to using Work Keys, they had current employees, obviously. And, you know, what are the current employees going to think about this? And actually, they both, there were two employers, and they both expressed that their current employees were really on board with it and really liked it because those current employees were many times the people who had to train the new employees, and that they were finding that they didn't have to do as much training on that. But again, it's a voluntary kind of thing. And then the other thing I think is that there are employees, or potential employees, who haven't, who maybe don't take the traditional educational route, for whatever reason. Whether they had just a bump in the road somewhere or something, and they haven't gone through that traditional route. Well, sometimes they're sort of at a dead end. They haven't, they don't have all the boxes that check as far as a diploma here or that or whatnot. And I think for some of them, this definitely gives a tool that they can go participate in the Work Keys tests, show that they, just because they didn't take a traditional route of getting a diploma in high school and going on to a four-year college or a two-year or whatever, that, but they still are smart, still have a lot of skills, still have great math skills, still have great reading comprehension, can do all the things that need to be done. It provides them a real opportunity to get in the workforce. And I think that's as big a benefit as anything that I've seen in, as I've seen, you know, working with people who come into Career Center.
Yeah, and I also think it makes a difference in what type of employee you're hiring. I mean, if you're primarily hiring professional level employees, I mean, I, you know, I'm the head of our HR department. We have a hundred and some employees. We're hiring professional level employees, but this serves absolutely no value for it. Because, you know, now if I was hiring a clerical person who, you know, I'm going to sit down and have them take an Excel test, or I'm going to have them sit down and do those things. So I could see how a certificate may be of some value in that, and I won't have to sit down here and come up with these tests they have to take. But, so, but when my professional staff or police officer, you know, I just don't see the value in it, really, for the city's employees. But I, certainly something we can, I think we can talk about with Terry and to see if, you know, I think we need to think about to go to the piece of having the partnership letter. I have only a problem with the promotion piece, having the partnership letter. I think we need to get some feedback from staff as to if they see for the city as being of value. I think in fairness, I mean, we can have opinions, and we all have opinions. But I think, do they see it as a tool? And in that case, you know, if they come back to another meeting and say, you know, we think this is the greatest thing since sliced bread, then, you know, it's going to be a different situation.
I would highly encourage you not to do it for that reason. I would want you to go into it feeling comfortable, this is the right thing to do for our community. If you look at, on this leadership team overview, the second website has many testimonials from local businesses across the state of Missouri who are already currently participating in it.
I read them all. I read them.
Okay. I just want to make sure I pointed that out. It is really making some great efforts in a lot of the businesses who are, who are working in it.
Am I getting, I didn't mean to put you on the spot. I just wanted a local, you've dealt with a lot more of the unemployed.
Yeah, that's fine. And I think, and also the other piece of, you know, there's two pieces of it, and sort of the endorsement piece of it, is that I think it's important, I think, as far as that leadership team goes, is to have as much community and as wide variety of community involvement in that. Because that, that community team, that leadership team, is really going to be helping shape what it looks like and how... team, is really going to be helping shape what it looks like and how communities are going to be able to interact, and because I don't think it's, I think there's room for involvement in shaping what it's going to be, and I think that the more voices we have, to have the whole community, the whole county, people from all within the county borders, cities, and all the other schools, all, you know, we've worked hard, because we want to buy in from the schools, we don't want them to feel like this is any kind of sidestepping them or anything like that. So, that part is as important as any in this, as we bring it, so.
I think one of the things that's confusing that we have here, too, is it looks like there's one app. I didn't realize, the first part is the Dear Review Work Committee, and then right below it is the Employer Letter, and it looks like it was, you know, this is the whole packet, the way it's set up on the screen, as opposed to having two options. I'm talking about on my screen.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
No, not on your screen. So, it looks like we didn't have a choice to promote and not actually participate as an employer.
And it was probably just the way the documents were scanned.
Right.
Did it all look like one big happy package. For the public standpoint, if they're interested in participating in your Workkeys program, they come into Boons Lake Regional Planning, sign up for this at no cost, and how often is the test given?
We actually administer the test two times a month. We usually try and space it out, so there's about a two-week interval in between each testing time. If we can't get them in when they need to be, I will call the community colleges, we do whatever it takes to get them tested as quickly as they need to. Sometimes they have employers that say, I have to have this test next Wednesday. We even go in so far as to administer a special date. It's a three-hour, three and a quarter hour test, so I have to pull a staff off to actually administer it. We will do that if it's going to get someone in their foot in the door with an employer.
And there's no cost to them?
There is no cost. It is paid for by Division of Workforce Development.
Okay.
Okay. So, so let's say that I've been out of the job market for a number of years, I've been out of school for a number of years, and those skills aren't necessarily something that I can sit in and take a test for. So, what is offered to them to prep for the test, and is there a fee for that? And do you want to talk about that so that people are...
Certainly. Any customer coming into our door, whether they're employed or unemployed, we get them registered into the Career Center on our website, which is called jobs.mo.gov. Once they're registered with us, then when they log into that website, there'll be a little button that they press on, it's called Career Ready 101, and that's the remediation tool you're talking about. So, let's say, for instance, in the Applied Mathematics section, there is Level 3, Lesson 1 through 12, then there's Level 4, Lesson 1 through 12. It goes all the way up through Level 7. So, they can remediate just on that one topic for as long as it takes them to get through it. Some of them may buzz through it in no time at all. Others, it takes a little bit longer, because like you say, you haven't been exposed to the math. That's usually where we see people have been away from the math formulas and calculations for a while, they have to work on that and brush up their skills. But I will tell you, those that we have tested and that have gone through that, that method, they're delighted, it builds their self-esteem, they're excited, they've scored well, and we have seen some very high tests in our area, so I'm very pleased to announce that. Most people, we weren't sure how this would all shake out when we first started doing that, concerned that our community may show a lower or higher, we weren't sure which way we were, what direction it would go, and we've been very happy with the results, that the majority of them are middle of the road, and a lot of them are even higher number of gold than we have the bronze, so that's excellent.
So, if we're using this time to promote your product, how does one become a customer?
You walk into the Career Center, and we register you.
Okay. Who's qualified to walk into the Career Center?
Anyone.
Anyone, so there is no...
Employed, unemployed. I invite you to come down.
There's no employee, unemployed, there's no high school graduation equivalent, there's no GED test to qualify as a, so I'm trying to think, what's the threshold?
The threshold is 18 years of age and up. Unfortunately, right now, we want to test high school juniors and seniors. We have made an application with the Missouri University Extension Center to get some grant funding for our high school juniors. As soon as we receive the grant approval for that, our plan is to go into Lincoln, Montgomery, and Warren Counties and talk with all the high school superintendents and see when we can start proctoring tests to the juniors and the seniors. That'll be a tool that will enable them when they walk out the doors, that they have an extra credential. There are some that don't want to go the traditional route, as Mike had mentioned, so if they do go into the workforce, no matter where they go, they're going to have to go get a job. It's just an extra tool to better market themselves.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? It's your pleasure.
I guess, as I'm unemployed, I guess we all come take a test.
Please.
You want to set up a time right now?
When's the next one?
Just got a calendar.
Just come in, we'll make sure you're registered, I'll show you how to navigate the site, and we can go from there. And then, once you get through the...
I've been on that website for a long time.
Have you seen, are you still registered? Because it won't show up if you're not registered. Okay, all right. Come in, I'll show you. It takes five minutes to show you how to navigate through the site.
I know, I didn't notice it the last time I was on, or that little thing you was talking about.
It could just be that your membership has expired, that takes five minutes to update, and will get you going. That's great, I would love you to do that.
I know I get on that old jobs thing, and I get emails from the job listings.
You can, your membership may have expired, and you'll still see job postings continually come to your email. Even once you're working, they just automatically, it's a...
I know it asks for my username and password, or something else.
We can look that up for you.
Well, I got this.
Okay.
Okay. I make a motion that we endorse the Work Ready Community Initiative, and that Michelle serves as our representative on the committee. I'm saying that right.
Motion's been made, and second, would you read that motion back to us?
To approve to participate in the Certified Work Ready Communities and permission to use our organization's name in public awareness efforts to promote the National Career Writing Certificate.
That was amazing that you said that, I didn't hear.
Thanks, Melanie, you make me sound good.
But to understand this, this is not doing the employee participation.
No.
Okay, all right, that's fine. Roll call, vote?
Alderman Dyer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Hawley?
Yes.
Alder Person Kastlerly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alder Person Clark?
Yes. Motion passed six to zero.
Thank you all very much.
And then I would, John, ask if we could have Terry take a look at the partnership and see if it's of value to the city, and come back with us with a recommendation or advice.
I have to ask her that?
Yes. It's because she asked you.
Will you do that for us, Terry?
Why, you're sitting there.
That's fine.
Good job.
Great. Item 14, this is where they hit us for the money.
Yeah, that's why Mike said...
That's a total different...
That's a different organization.
No.
I'm not here for that.
You're not here for that?
Next month.
Who is, is anybody here for that?
No.
No.
Okay. Who's going to talk about that for us? Did me?
Michelle, is that you?
Isn't this the organization that we were paying $10,000 to, and out of the generosity and kindness of the heart of some of the Board of Aldermen, they want to give them an extra $1,000 because they're required to have them on it because of the city?
Yes.
Isn't that why I voted no on? So, we know it is, it's...
Are you done?
Yeah, I'm just waiting for you to respond.
Is this a budgeted item?
Entertainer motion, or any more discussion?
Make a motion to, I guess, pay an annual contribution to the Greater Warren County EDC or Economic Development Council.
Second.
The amount of $11,000.
Second.
Motion's been made in second to approve payment or dues, whatever it is, of $11,000 to the Greater Warren County Economic Development. Roll call, vote?
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Hawley?
Yes.
Alder Person Kastlerly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
No.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dyer?
Yes.
Would you like to explain your no?
Well, if the amount was $10,000, I would vote yes, but I still think we, there's no reason for us to be giving $1,000 away if the taxpayer's money, you know, when we don't need to, so that's...
We paid $11,000 last year, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, but I voted to pay $10,000. I voted no on that, so I'm consistent. May disagree with him, but I'm consistent.
He's consistent.
Okay. He's consistent.
I'm consistent.
Whoopi.
Did he just say whoopi? He should have said whoopi.
Appointment of representative to the Greater Warren County Economic Development.
I think we ought to appoint John.
Who we have on it now?
Michelle.
Michelle.
Michelle is on there now, and it was the mayor's intent to appoint Jack Ham.
And how does Jack feel about that?
He's fine with that.
Okay. And how's Michelle feel about that?
That's fine.
What did you expect her to say?
Well, I'm just kind of wondering why, what, because...
He wants to rotate the pointy ear?
Well, I think the thought process was, when we discussed it, that Michelle has brought the economic development background to it, and it would be nice to have the planning and zoning and building background added to that group for this term.
Can we not have them both? Are we only allowed one?
I think they can both attend the meeting, but you have to have a voting representative.
Okay.
Michelle, just, I mean, I know we've talked before on this, I think, correct in that area, that sometimes they do ask more building-related questions to ordinances or what we may have on there, that sometimes it's not difficult for you to answer, but you have to go back and answer for them, which kind of puts you in a quandary sometimes for them.
Yes.
I would encourage you to continue to participate in the meetings, Michelle.
Any other...
You know, I would rather have her be the appointed representative and have Jack come along.
And have Jack go. That's what I'm wondering, too.
Her expertise skills is, should be economic development, which is what the committee does, and if she needs it as a resource, or they need a resource, then Jack should be the resource. Why would we do it backwards? I don't, I don't get it.
I agree with that, I don't understand this. If Jack's title was economic development, then that would make sense to me, but that's Michelle's title and Michelle's role.
Michelle, what's your opinion on it? Let's ask that instead. Do you want to stay representative, or would you rather...
I think either way would work. I mean, Jack has the background in planning and zoning, and I know they have representatives from economic development there already, so that would give them a more rounded board with Jack being there.
But are we worried about the overall board or our interests?
I think our interest is all we're worried about. I don't care about their board, I care about our representation. It's really not a fair question for Michelle to answer.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, too.
She's kind of in the middle of a spot here.
But you're maybe putting her in a spot that she may not want to be anymore, because if she's agreeing to a representation, the change of the representation, why should we allow that for her?
But is she agreeing to representation, because she really doesn't have a choice to agree or not to agree? I think we're putting her in an awkward position.
I'd disagree with you all the more.
Well, that's okay. Ask John and say, whoopee.
Whoopee, good enough.
So, I mean, that's just my point, I...
Yeah, it makes no sense to me, put Jack in, so, I think Jack can go any time.
Well, I'd then make a motion that we appoint Michelle as the representative of the Warren County Economic Development Board and ask that Jack attend meetings as needed.
Second.
Motion's been made in second to appoint, who'd you say?
Michelle.
Michelle. To be the representative on the board. Only comment I would have is the mayor made a request to put Jack on it, is that correct?
The mayor and I discussed it and felt like Jack was the best alternative at this point, yes.
Yes, and I just would probably be more in favor of honoring the mayor's request.
But I think the key word in her, it was the best alternative. I'm not looking for an alternative, I'm looking for a member. But anyway.
Maybe that was the wrong choice of words, that Jack was the best person at this point in time.
To represent on that board.
All right.
Michelle, fourth.
Motion, second. Roll call, vote?
Alderman Hawley?
Yes.
Alder Person Kastlerly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
No.
Alderman Dyer? Alderman Schluter?
No.
Motion passed four to two to retain Michelle as our representative. Let's see, where are we at now? Let's see, approval...
Sixteen.
Sixteen, item sixteen, approve to hire Viro LLC as the master plan consultant. We met last week, and we met both the consultants, so...
Yeah, I'd be kind of curious if, I mean, it seemed like we came to some kind of consensus after the meeting, but does anybody have other additional thoughts, or since we've stepped away from it?
I would just want to know, Terry, have you talked to either of the groups since then?
The only conversations we've had is just that the board will be considering it and making a decision tonight, and we would be in touch with them.
I have...
So, at what point will we discuss the scope of the project?
I think you need to make a determination on which company you want to hire, and then once we've done that, then I think we sit down with them and talk about what it is you desire for them to do.
And I guess if you hire them and you can't work out the scope, then you just don't engage the service.
Or we go, you know, if you don't want to go to the second option, then we can always put you...
So, a motion to hire really isn't doing anything until we can actually work out the terms and the scope.
I think you can...
We're not signing a contract until we...
You can approve them, like typically what we do with engineers, is you'll approve primary and an alternate, and then allow us to proceed with negotiating the scopes of service contract, so...
I think we decide we don't want to do the alternate. We either have them or back to the drawing board.
Then I think you can maybe approve us proceeding with a scope of service contract, and I think that we do.
Well, but I think the scope of service contract's a little bit different in that we have to decide as a board what the scope is, because that's one thing that came out of the meeting, is there were parts of the proposal we felt like we didn't need, we already had the engineering piece, we already had this, so, you know, we'd want to engage them, sit down and discuss what it is we need as a city and how we can best work that out and costs and all that, so that's kind of where we're at on it.
I think you approved hiring them, and then we meet with them, discuss the scope, have them bring a proposal for that back to you, and then you can either accept the proposal or not accept the proposal.
And I feel the same about the one that we picked as we did that night.
I think they were the best choice of the two for proceeding on hiring.
They certainly had the widest diversified skill sets, you know, whereas the other...
The other one seemed like they had their minds already made up, how they were going to do and what they were going to do.
Yeah, I didn't think their familiarity with the Warren County area added any value at all, other than they were familiar.
The level of professionalism brought by the first company was...
Very good.
...exemplary.
So, how's this pronounced, Vireo?
I believe so.
Make a motion that we hire Vireo to work with the city on the master, as master plan consultant.
Second.
Motion's been made first and second to hire Vireo LLC as a master plan consultant. Rule call vote.
Alda Preston Cassily?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Slater?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero. Item seventeen.
Good evening. I have the bid tabs for the salt spreader for the grounds and maintenance department. Rikers was a low bid of $4,077. It's the same salt spreader that's in the back of the truck Darren drives. It's a plastic body, or polybody and stuff, and it's, it's held up very well, and with the, we don't have a problem with the rust and what have you, and all the parts are readily available at Washington and Midwest Truck Systems, too. So, it's, it's...
So, that gives us two salt spreaders?
Two small ones, yeah. That's easier to go into the, this one will be mounted on, on the one ton, on my one ton with the snow plow. So, if we did get in a spot where we need to end of the smaller places, which I'm going to do here at City Hall, the parks, and anywhere else we need it, it just works good for those, a lot of those tighter streets, and rather than trying to get a big truck down there, that we can take this one down and do the, do the job. Darren's had real good luck with it the last couple of years, and it's held up very well, so...
Does this mean if we can afford a salt spreader, we can afford the salt?
Open guys got the salt. I'm going to have the spreader, but hopefully, hopefully they'll have the salt.
I make a motion that we approve the salt spreader from Rikers out of Washington in the amount of $4,077.
I'll second that. Motion's been made first and second to approve a purchase of a salt spreader from Riker, Washington, Missouri, for $4,077. Rule call vote.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Slater?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alda Preston Cassily?
Yes.
Thank you, that's all I have.
I have two things for, um, could you kind of give us an update on the replacement of the basketball court over there? I've had a number of people talking to me about that.
It's all, it's poured, we're letting it, it's a test cure for fourteen days, so I can drive on it to get the backfill, dirt on both sides. Friday was, was a week, so if next week, we should be able to start having that done. We've got all the goals and everything here, just a matter of getting it backfilled, seeded and strawed, and then we'll open that back up.
And what about the, where I wrote the Thai project over?
Where the blocks are, some of the blocks are already there, the gentleman was going to do it, the rain last Friday, or last week kind of messed him up on two. He was planning on being here Monday. He should be here tomorrow. He was finishing, trying to finish up the job, the rains over the weekend kind of really...
So, what's he think, two days left on it, or?
Excuse me?
How long does he think it's going to take to finish?
He figures he can get in and out in five days, but, you know, it's, it's, we've, the contract, I think, is, you know, give him a few more, so...
But he's hit...
Yeah, he didn't, he didn't see that big of a thing, and like I say, we've, we've started bringing the blocks in, we've halted, I had him stop right now, because I didn't want to get too many there, because we got to get rock, we got to get, you know, stuff in and out, so once, once he gets here on site, then they'll, they'll start bringing the blocks again, so we...
Is, is the ties moved?
No, not, not yet, no.
So, the concern about this?
Oh, no.
The hillside sliding is still...
No, the ties are all pinned together, and, and they're all, you know, that, that's not a problem, no. And we've got the, the fencing and everything is down, we've got orange fence up, just to kind of put the, so he can get in and start working. We did our part, so now just when he gets there, everything's out of his way, so he can jump in and get her, get her going.
So, the tennis courts are still closed?
No, the tennis courts are open right now. I, I left them open so that, so they, they could still play, but once they get on site, then that park will be closed off, because we have to do some repairs to the playground surface up there anyhow, and I figured this would be a good time, because we don't want anybody, when the trucks and things going through there, we figured it'd be a good time to take, you know, shut that park, park completely down and get that done.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Item eighteen, Terry Torn.
My first item for you this evening is the results from the Tourism Commission that met on September 30th. They recommended approval of two items for the city. The first is up to $2,800 in expense for the circus that is coming to town next Monday. The second is for Hometown Christmas in the amount of $12,500. New this year to the Hometown Christmas is the addition, recommended by Tourism, of special giveaways. They want to come up with an event that is similar to the Jonesburg Hometown Christmas event, but they don't want to do bicycles and coffee off of Jonesburg, so their intent is to have electronic items that will attract people into the city. They'll actually have to come in and get a little ticket that will get them into the drawing for those items, so their hope is, by the addition of significant giveaways, if you will, it will become the attraction that the Jonesburg Hometown Christmas has become. So, recommendation of tourism is total of $15,300 for those two events.
Any questions or comments?
So, who, who runs, I've never been to this, so who runs this? Do we have staff come in? So, in addition to this, we have staff come, or?
This is an event that is primarily done by the department heads, staffed by the department heads. Jessica Black, the special events person, will be here, and then in addition to that, the department head staff is the labor for that evening.
You ought to come down to it.
And does she put it on? She coordinates with Hometown, or with the...
WDA.
Yes, we are just, we are, it is not a city event. We are a participant in the Warrenton Downtown Association event, and it is planned for the reindeer to be back again this year.
Well, that changed my vote.
Well, you should come down.
I make a motion that we approve the request from the Tourism Committee in the amount of $15,300, up to $15,300 for the Hometown Christmas and the circus.
Second.
We have a motion first and second to, well, you want to read that back?
To approve the budgeted tourism recommendations in the amount of $15,300.
Rule call vote.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Slater?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alda Preston Cassily?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Motion's passed six to zero.
The next item I have for you this evening is a discussion related to the employee awards banquet. In your packet, you had a memo that details the results of a survey that Brady put together, asking the question of our employees, what their desire is for the employee awards banquet. We had had feedback from exit interviews of some previous employees that the event really was not seen as a benefit, but something you have to attend. It's my feeling that for the amount of money we spend to hold this employee banquet, that it should be done in a manner that the employees feel like is a benefit to them and that they enjoy. The results of the survey were, out of thirty-four responses, twenty-six wanted to change to a luncheon-type banquet as opposed to a Saturday night-type banquet. Based upon that, I would recommend that we combine the employee appreciation luncheon that we previously had with the awards banquet, provide a catered luncheon, do it in conjunction with some kind of attendance prizes, attendance awards, that could be turned into the entertainment as a white elephant type of thing, that we do it in November and get it out of the way prior to the Thanksgiving holiday, so that we're not competing with all those things that everyone is so busy with. And I think, as a result of listening to what our employees said, we would reduce the cost of those two events together to somewhere less than $4,000.
Questions or comments? Better turn the motion.
I'll make a motion to move the employee awards banquet to a luncheon-style banquet for your request.
Second.
Motion's made first and second. Would you read that motion back?
To combine the luncheon, or the, the employee appreciation luncheon with the awards banquet as submitted.
Fine, gentlemen. Rule call vote.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Slater?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alda Preston Cassily?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Motion's passed six to zero.
My next item for you this evening is a question. We are having people come in and sign up for the recycling that will be free starting in November, so there is some word out there. But my question for you is really your desire as far as sending out a flyer, mailing a flyer, to eligible residents. The cost for that would be about $1,000 for the flyer and the mailing cost. So, prior to us doing that, I just wanted to make sure that that's something that you all are comfortable with spending that money to do, and that that's what your desire is. It had been suggested by Alderman Clark that perhaps if we mail the flyer, we include a portion that can be torn off and submitted to sign up, as opposed to them having to come into City Hall. I think that's a good idea, if you choose to mail the flyer. So, it's really just finding out what your desire is, so that we know how to move forward with it.
Can we put something on the website that they can just go to the website and click "Yes, I want to do it," and put their address in, and they're good to go?
We have not done those things in the past, because we need signatures, just to make sure that we're, we have experienced in the past when we've not required a signature on something, that different individuals live in different houses that don't necessarily have the ability to make decisions for those houses. So, at that point, we started requiring signatures, so that when there's a complaint about something happening, we have a signature to go back to. So, this was an opportunity just to still have someone sign up for it, so we know who to go back to, but then they can drop it in the drop box, they can put it in mail, send it with their utility bill, however they wanted to return it, without physically having to come in.
And if they're currently recycling but haven't signed up through you, through the city, how would that, what would happen to that person? Would they continue to get billed for it, or that'll come off their bill and they're still signed up?
They'll automatically convert over to the free recycling, and it will just disappear from their billing.
Okay.
So, anyone who's currently on is going to stay on.
We need to let people know that.
Okay.
How much, how much was the totes that we agreed not to purchase?
A dollar twenty-five a month.
Was it eighteen thousand, the tote?
It was eighteen thousand to purchase initially the totes, I believe.
Well, eight thousand totes, or...
Yeah, it was, well, it wasn't eight thousand totes. It had to be, what, two thousand and something totes?
It was right, if I remember correctly, it was around three thousand.
Yeah, somewhere there. And not everybody wants a full bowl of totes, that's why, kind, one of the reasons we also decided not to go to tote.
Right, but we should put that information on the flyer.
Then if you're interested...
Right.
Yeah, and I think we should, I think we should do a mailing, get it, get it together the way we want to, and just do a one-time mailing and let people know, and then from there on, when people come to the city to move in or whatever, that's something that's brought up as, I don't know if we have a welcome package or...
We do, and we will include that.
Well, my thinking was with the tear-off, so they wouldn't have to come in, there's a lot of people who may choose it, but don't have the time or desire to come in, and the desire of the board, I thought, was to get everybody on it, as possible. We're buzzing.
It was our, somebody from Virginia buzzing.
So, it's, we're going to do a mailer, is the consensus?
Mailer with, with a tear-off at the bottom or something?
Okay, we can do that.
Or either they can report back without having to come in?
We'll do that, no problem.
You might, you might have your, our IT person check in on, on Holly's idea of doing it online, because there's ways to do that online now, and get a signature, I believe.
Yeah, we don't have that current ability in our system.
Maybe when we do our upgrade to our website, we'll...
We're going to have lots of new fancy things we can do with our new website.
Okay.
We're kind of on the arc still, floating around.
We need a motion for that?
Oh, I wouldn't think so.
I don't think so.
I was going to ask you another question. I got in the mail today, this letter, asking me to sign up for Warrenton water sewer pipe protection stuff. Has anybody else got that in the community?
Those go around occasionally. It's from an individual outside company.
It's a private solicitation, but it almost looks like the city's sending it out. Is there somewhere, if we're going to do this mailing, if you're getting these, it's not from the city, or somehow we can let people know? Because it looks really official, but it's, it's not. I guess we can't stop it.
Yeah, I can't think of a way that we would be able to circumvent that.
Yeah, because I would hate to have somebody sign up for that, thinking that they were getting a product from the city.
It happens every year. A couple times a year, there's this little mailer that goes out, and we get calls.
Okay, so you do get calls.
There are calls that come into City Hall about it, but I can't think of a way that we could...
Maybe we can get the newspaper, maybe write an article about it.
Newspaper, if we add it to the next, the next KWERE thing that we may do.
That you may do, Terry.
All right.
Eric volunteered.
Yeah, Eric, you could do it.
I'm volunteering for the last of us.
I have a couple of other things under operational updates.
Today was the last day of the farmer's market.
I did speak with John Claire on the phone today. He said they had had a great year, they were very happy with the way that their year turned out, and they are looking forward to doing the same thing next year. So, I think we should proceed with figuring out what we need to do to get that all set up, so that we're ready for it when next year comes, but they were very happy.
What's the story with the farmer guy who's selling stuff, I guess on the weekends, next to the, where the old parties would be?
Title Max.
Title Max or whatever it is? Is that something that the city's just allowing, or is it? Because I would have thought that farmer's market people would be saying, hey, wait a minute, what's this guy doing here? He needs to come on Tuesdays and participate, so it's...
They don't have exclusive privileges in the city, so they really can't say, and as long as that guy has permission, and he has either a day or a seasonal merchant license to be able to do that, he is allowed to sell there.
So, so we did issue him, I assume?
Yes.
A season, okay, all right.
And we've had several times that people have called and wanted to have somebody go check, but there is a day merchant license that's available, and that's what he possesses. But there is nothing in our code that says the farmer's market location is the exclusive right to sell produce.
There's even a state statute, Alderman Ock, that protects locally grown produce farmers.
Does he locally grow produce? I don't know.
I don't know. I mean, I think it's one of the, a very difficult statute to interpret what exactly it is, if like refers to farmers, but we looked at that, and, you know, the farmer's market is really a venue and a advertisement to, you know, assist farmer's market, but we can't tell him, he can't do that, he's got his day merchants licensed.
Yeah, because I, because I know in the past, we always had local businesses who had buildings and structures competing with somebody kind of showed up and got a day merchant license, and people were bragging, you know, I made this investment in the community of my business, and now you're allowing this guy to come in, but we don't get that feedback on this situation.
I have not had any.
And then the last thing that I have is a reminder that Saturday is cleanup day in the city of Warrenton, so staff will be here at City Hall assisting with the drop-off of all those various things that can be brought in, and I believe, starting at two o'clock, is that right, two o'clock? The refreshments will be served. I know there's going to be hamburgers and hot dogs and soda, so any of you who have time to come by, we're hoping that a lot of the community participants will be here for that part of the event together, to kind of as a celebration, so all of you are welcome to come down and flip a hamburger or a hot dog, or just have a hamburger or a hot dog, and be here to thank the community for participating in the event. So, two o'clock on Saturday for refreshments, but what time does it start? Eight AM?
Eight AM.
No carpet.
No carpet.
I've been asked about carpet.
No carpet. Tires, televisions?
No tire for, no charge for the tires or television?
No charge for tires or televisions, but everyone dropping off goods will have to show proof of residency. And there's a maximum of ten tires per residence. So, time to get rid of all that stuff. That's all I have, thank you.
Okay. I have one other operational question. We talked about the garage, the property owner who's tearing down that building at the corner of Ashland and Steinhegen. Does he have a date, do you know, of when that needs to be done, because it's a mess?
I know that Jack has been contacted with an extension of the demolition permit, but as I sit here, I can't tell you how long that extension is, but I can certainly check on it and let you know.
Yeah, because it's a real mess out there, so, okay.
Any other questions, comments? Item nineteen?
Good evening. The first thing I have for you tonight is my monthly report, and I would like for you to note that we have two upcoming ribbon cuttings. One is a ribbon cutting open house at All About Signs and Shirts. They will be having their event from 4:30 to 6:30 Thursday, October 16th, and the ribbon cutting will be at 5:00 PM. And the second one we have is a ribbon cutting for American Family Insurance at Town and Country Market. And the second one we have is a ribbon cutting for American Family Insurance at Town and Country Market. And at this time, he does not have a flyer out, just that's the date and time. His is October twenty-third. As it gets closer, if there's a flyer, I will email that to you guys and I'll also send out reminder emails as we get closer.
Is somebody from the board going to represent the city since the mayor is not available? Or do we need to figure that out or... Doesn't matter.
I will be attending, if any of the board members are available.
That would be great if you represent us, thank you.
And you already took care of item B. And the next item I have for you is approval to apply for Transportation Alternative Funding Program. With MODOT, we would like to put a walking trail off of Market Street with some benches and possibly some like outdoor exercise equipment so that we could get some use of this park and have people out there walking and getting some exercise.
Can I ask, we discussed, this is the property right behind the cinema?
Yes.
Is there, I mean, is the grant money that you're talking about doing, so is that going to be enough money to cover that?
It's an eighty-twenty grant.
And what do we think the total project cost will be?
Have not looked into that a whole lot at this time. There is, I did give you some pricing for some of the equipment that we're looking at possibly doing. And we could, you know, add just a few of those if we want. Those aren't a package deal, we don't have to buy a whole set of those. We could buy one or we could wait and add them later.
Were these outdoor?
Yes.
Because, boy, they look, they look like they'd be indoor.
No, they are, they are actually outdoor equipment, and a lot of parks are going to them with people. They'll walk a lap and then they'll stop and maybe do some pull-ups or push-ups at these stations, and then they walk to the next one and kind of adds, how, they're saying now that instead of just walking, you should break up your, your exercise routine a little bit. It gives it more of that feel.
It's just, I find it hard to believe that those are outdoor equipment. I know it says outdoor fitness, but it looks like something that belongs in a gym.
I think if you all agree that this is a project you'd be interested in pursuing, then the next step is to get some pricing together so that you know what the dollar amount is of the project. But if there's no interest, then it's not worthy of spending the time to.
Well, I have two thoughts on it. One is, I think if we do anything, we're going to take flak because people are unhappy with it. But that doesn't mean we shouldn't do anything. But the question is, is that place where people would go and walk because there's no shade trees or anything else?
Well, that's why the benches are going to have like little pavilions over them so they could sit in the shade. And the restrooms are movable restrooms, so if, and the majority of this is kind of thought, if we do go ahead with the rec center or put the pole there later, it could all be in the same area. Or if we have to tear out a little part of the walking trail, it's not a lot that we have to tear up. It's something that we can actually build around and onto.
Does that parking lot already exist at some point?
No.
So we'd have to pay for the parking lot?
For now, probably just be gravel for right now.
Could we take our existing walking trail at Binkley and put equipment along that trail?
We could. The problem with Binkley is parking. We do not have a whole lot of parking at Binkley.
Before we do anything to attract a lot more visitors, we're going to need to address parking at Binkley Park.
I did not realize that was an issue. And I've gone up there and walked and ran and have never had a problem.
I think when people are using the, renting the pavilion and all that, it fills up really, really fast and that's when you see it.
So are you saying the first step you would recommend is to get a budget for this?
If you all have an interest in this project.
And then do the application.
In this location, as it's presented, then the next step would be for Brad and Michelle to work on pricing structure.
I think we have to make a decision if we have an interest because I'd hate to have them spend their time and then come back with something and that's go, you know, I really don't want to do it. I think we need to make a decision if we want to go forward on it or not. And I'm torn, I don't know what to do.
You could still put my dog park in the middle of it.
We'll go cool in the complex.
I know, we talked about it, and then you got all scared because the dog got its head eaten off and went through.
I didn't, I didn't.
Do you guys have like a ballpark of what you think this would cost just to put in the equipment, the trail and the parking lot?
He does have some numbers, and I don't have them with me on the bathroom and the benches, but that's it. We didn't get into the walking trail.
How far would that walking trail be?
I think it's just a little under a mile, if I'm not mistaken.
Can you look into the cost of adding a dog park in the middle of it? I'm serious.
What do you need to add a dog park? Just some plastic bags?
No, you're going to have fencing.
Oh, oh, oh. Oh, the dog.
So what's the pleasure down at this end of the board? Anybody?
I say proceed at least until we have costs. I think there's an interest.
Or could we table it until we get some more costs?
Well, that's what we're going to do.
Well, we have to get in. She wants to know if we have enough interest for her to get cost.
Yeah, that's the question.
My vote would be yes.
My vote would be yes, with the dog park consideration. I'm serious.
I think it'd be a good thing. I'd like to see a tree somewhere.
For him to pee on.
Gary?
Is it happy, a motion or just?
No, she's trying to get indications. So so far, there's three yeses and I'm not sure.
Go ahead and proceed.
All right. So you got a majority.
Majority of the board, I guess, would like for you to proceed. Somebody, this is being hard to get along with. We won't mention.
That's all I have for you this evening.
Was I the one?
No, I wasn't mentioning. Item twenty. Was there any more questions for Michelle or anything? Item twenty. Gabe's, yeah, Gabe's here. Sorry, would you like to give your report?
Sure, good evening. The only item that I have for you is the accounts payable, the monthly invoices that total two hundred forty-two thousand, five hundred forty-six dollars and twenty-three cents. I'm requesting approval to pay those.
Any questions, comments? Make a motion?
Make a motion to approve the payment of the bills in the amount of two hundred forty-one thousand, nine hundred ninety dollars and eighty-three cents.
I'll second that.
Is that part of the amount?
Two hundred forty-two thousand, five hundred forty-six dollars and twenty-three cents.
Oh, gosh, okay. We're confused. I'm confused.
I'm looking at the total that's on that page four, that's where I got that. So there must be another page.
Oh, my goodness. I apologize. Yes, you are correct, two hundred forty-one thousand, nine hundred ninety-nine dollars and eighty-three cents.
Did you hear that, Joe? Yes. High five. Okay. Was there a second on that?
Yes, there was.
Motion's been made in second. Would you like to read that back to me?
Approve the accounts payable in the amount of two hundred forty-one thousand, nine hundred ninety-nine dollars and eighty-three cents.
Rule call, vote?
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderman Casserly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
You have anything else?
Well, I have, thank you.
Item twenty-one.
Good evening. I thought I would take advantage of the fact that Guy isn't here tonight to spend money, and I would attempt to. I'm going to make sure I play that background.
No.
The first thing I have is the cargo minivan for animal control. This is on the state bid approval for twenty thousand, nine forty-four.
Make a motion to approve the purchase of a minivan for animal control of the amount of twenty thousand, nine hundred forty-four dollars.
I'll second that.
Any discussion, questions? Want to read that? Let's see, it's approved the minivan for twenty thousand, nine hundred forty-four dollars. Rule call, vote?
Alderman Casserly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Thank you. The second thing I have is the approval to purchase two Ford Taurus police interceptors. I got everything on this bid tab this time that we're going to need to get the upfits done. The first item is the vehicle itself. That's on the state bid for the two vehicles, fifty-four thousand, seven fifty. And then the outfit is item number two there. The low bidder on that was Ed Rohr. And that includes a light bar, shotgun rack, basically everything that we need to outfit the police vehicle, except for, moving down to the next item, is the radar unit. That is the state bid price for the Stalker Dual. The next item, three there, is the mobile radios. That again is a state bid. And then the very last item there is the in-car video. We moved to ten-eight video last year when we got the Explorer and are pretty happy with that, and they also come in, the low bidder on that. So my recommendation is for low bids and state contracts on all of those pieces. The total cost of seventy thousand, five thirty-four and seventy-four cents. The budgeted amount was seventy-two thousand, eight hundred.
I'll make a motion to approve the, but, or the amount of seventy thousand, five hundred thirty-four dollars and seventy-four cents for the purchase of two police interceptors, I guess, fully packaged.
Second.
Motion's made first and second to approve the... I want to read that back, how you want to put it.
To approve the purchase of two two thousand fifteen Ford Taurus police interceptors, fully loaded, using the state bids and low bids, in the amount of seventy thousand, five hundred thirty-four dollars and seventy-four cents.
Rule call, vote?
Can I ask a question before you go?
Yes.
So are these two new cars going to be replacements or are they just two new cars?
They will replace vehicles which will be taken out of service and either repurposed within the police department or repurposed within the city.
What happens to the internal equipment that's in those cars that we end up buying this new equipment?
That stuff is worn out. We tried, we tried this on the Explorer and have had some problems, and it's just, it's not worth the maintenance trying to keep up with those.
So when the car goes out, everything goes out, basically?
Pretty much, yeah. It gets, it gets pretty well-used over another four or five years' life of the car.
So these are replacing vehicles that are, what, four or five years old?
Yes.
And it also matter fitting properly as well? They do address a lot of those to fit a certain combination of a car.
Right.
So the cars we take out of service, you do it based on mileage, so they had a hundred thousand or something, that's when you pull them?
Yeah, generally, they have over a hundred thousand miles on them.
Rough miles.
No more questions?
Rule call, vote?
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderman Casserly?
Yes.
Thank you. And the last thing I have is the computer hardware bid. This is the first step towards getting our very old server equipment replaced. Currently, we're running on two servers that are at a minimum six years old. I'm thinking more like seven or eight. So they're at end of life as well as the operating systems that are on those. We've talked about going towards a virtualized environment, which is what this bid is going to accomplish. Basically, virtualization will, it's a fault tolerant environment, so if, if one or the other of the servers goes down, the other one can pick up the load. So this, you know, in the current situation, one server basically handles the police department function and the other server handles the city function. If one or the others, other of those goes out, we're done in that department until we can get that back in service. In a virtualized environment, that won't happen. Unless, God forbid, both of them go out.
Yeah, so basically, they're mirroring each other all the time, so you, you don't have to worry about...
Well, and it's not, it's not as much about the mirroring of data as it is actually, there's machines running within the machine. And those machines basically function as the current machines do now, but in a virtualized environment. I mean, that's kind of the easiest way I can describe it without getting out crayons and boards and stuff.
Please don't. Crayons will help me.
I, aren't you, this is a jury, Tony? I thought you were IT school, you know?
Yes, I teach computers and no, I have nothing to do with servers.
So here's what I was going to, well, first of all, my IT guy was out of town, so I didn't get a chance to ask about the product name because usually you expect to see Dell or an IBM, and this was kind of a...
Yeah, this is, this is a home brand, AQM. AQM is our current computer IT support. I don't think they're going to put anything in here that they're going to have difficulty with. I think the, the most important part here is that they're putting quality intel processors in those. And the, the data storage piece is actually a, a name brand piece, so I feel pretty comfortable moving forward with that.
And it came in under budget.
So then the other question I had is, he had a note in here that says, "AQM concedes that the city of Warrington may receive better bidding via the government contracts." So are we buying it through him even though we could get better bidding through government or what do you?
He's actually talking about the software side of this, which I'll have to come back and bring you. I'm going to get pricing from Worldwide Technology. They have the state bid.
Okay.
So I'll bring that back in two weeks, get that approved.
Okay, that's all our questions, Brian.
I make a motion that we approve the recommendation of the police chief to accept bid from AQM for computer hardware.
Second.
In the amount of nineteen thousand, six hundred and sixty-four dollars, sorry.
I'll second that, sir. Motion's been made in second to approve the purchase of the computers from AQM for nineteen thousand, six hundred and sixty-four dollars. Rule call, vote?
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderman Casserly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
That's all I have, thank you.
Item twenty-two.
The only item I have is to request approval to purchase two signs at a thousand dollars each. These are the signs to be added to the city limit signs that say, "Home of Hannah Keen, two thousand fourteen Missouri State Fair Queen." And they would go right underneath the ones that say, "Two thousand thirteen Ashley Bauer."
So now we have room for two thousand fifteens?
No, you're only allowed two signs. So we, we've reached our max if we put these up.
Better tell the next fair queen.
We'll just spray paint it over.
Just a thousand bucks a piece?
Yes, same price as they were when we purchased them for Ashley Bauer.
Make a motion to reauthorize the purchase of the two thousand fourteen Fair Queen plaques in the amount of a thousand dollars per plaque.
Second.
Motion's been made first and second to purchase Fair Queen signs to go on our city limit sign for two thousand dollars. Rule call, vote?
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderman Casserly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes. Item twenty-three, bills to ordinance. Bill number fifty-nine dash fourteen.
Is it, why are we, why do we have this ordinance for maintenance of the sign? Don't we always, haven't they been maintaining the sign or is this something new?
It has to be updated each time you add another or change your MODOT signs.
Okay. Make a motion for the first reading of bill number fifty-nine dash fourteen.
Second.
Call for the reading?
Motion by Alderman Ock, seconded by Alderman Casserly for the first reading of bill number fifty-nine dash fourteen.
of bill number 59-14. An ordinance authorizing execution of an agreement between Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission and the City of Warrton, Missouri, for signage installed and maintained by commission to display it, an accomplishment plaque.
Make a motion for the second final reading and approval of bill number 59-14.
Second.
Motion has been made in second to have the second reading and passage of bill number 60-14.
59.
59, okay, I'll warn them. 59-14.
An ordinance authorizing execution of an agreement between Missouri Highway and Transportation Commission and the City of Warrton, Missouri, for signage installed and maintained by commission to display an accomplishment plaque.
Roll call, vote.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderperson Casterly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Motion's passed 6-0. Bill number 60-14.
I think we probably want to table this bill, because it includes the signing of the employer partnership portion of the agreement, and I think from the discussion, we want to get feedback from Terry as to, she wants to go forward with it, so we can hear that, then we can pass it. It's not an objection to it, it's just, the bill's not...
Well, and I think if we want to go ahead and proceed with, you know, the commitment to supporting it, we need to fix this, so that the language is correct, and we can do that for next meeting.
All right.
Okay, so, is everybody in agreement with that?
Yes.
Okay, we'll table bill number 60-14 till next meeting. Item 24, executive session, real estate and legal counsel.
Make a motion that we move to executive session to discuss real estate and legal counsel.
I'll second that.
Roll call, vote.
Motion to close the board meeting and go into executive session for real estate and legal counsel.
Roll call, vote.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yep.
Alderperson Casterly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
For adjourned.
Need an adjourn.
I think you made it.
Somewhere we missed something, did we? We should hand up the motion to adjourn and go into the...
Which we did all in one.
All in one. But that motion wasn't made for an executive session, not...
Yes, that was...
Oh, she ran it right away?
She went stuff ahead of us. Two hours is a long time.
Yes, Cindy.
I guess it probably tied it down.
Right when I think I'm getting the hang of it.
John, you got your rhythm. John was, wasn't John on a roll?
John was on a roll, sometimes going sideways, sometimes going forward, but on a roll.
Hey, sometimes even backwards.
I'm so cold, I can hardly stand it.
You know, the mayor's...
You can wear trousers up here, it's too cold, because your legs are...
The mayor no longer is here, so we can turn the roof cover...